Forty to forty-five, non-Norton public school students but residents of the town of Norton who may be attending another school in the area of Oak, the Aggie for example, or Head Start, or are literally one or two-year-olds that are part of a family. And that's gone over really well. I want to congratulate our food services team from Charwell's at the high school. It goes really smoothly. People come out, they never get out of their car. There's a big chart that says what your food choices are. Their name is taken down, how many, how much they need. It's provided to them. It's charred. There's a cost associated with it to us. And people are being fed. And I'm really, really happy to tell you that we got started right away on day one. I mean, we left on Friday and we started providing breakfast and lunch on Monday. That's, that's a pretty cool turnaround. A lot of districts are just kicking in right now. We're not necessarily a huge free reduced lunch district, but I think based on the discussions I've had on the town side specifically with the human resources department, with that, that what we're starting to see is younger families going for things like food stamps and unemployment. And as you know, unemployment hit three point three million today, which is the highest unemployment area in terms of people filing since nineteen eighty-two. So that, that, that brings me back to my middle school days. I mean, that's how long it's, it's been, even higher than the recent recession that we had. So I think there's going to be a little bit of a play with that in the near future. But that's the big gist. So we have A, go into remote learning, B, looking at providing safety in terms of food and for families. I think S E L is going to be a big one. Vinnie Cersei, James Sullivan, and Ed All have been putting together things online to send out to families and then it's up to them if they want to use it. There's one coming up, a webinar with Dr. Plummer, who's a Brown University specialist in this field. He actually works for us as a consultant with our behavioral and social emotional issues. So he'll be available to that. We're going to really push having parents just, you know, go online and watch it and be part of it. The town and I are now meeting every Monday at two o'clock virtually. We had our first one this past week, Monday, actually the week before, I already think that. And then starting this coming Monday, we're going to have another one at two o'clock. And yeah, the tents that moved me just because of financials, just leaving everybody online. I think that's the big picture. I don't know if any of the administrative assistants want to chime in, but any other things that would be important for the school committee to have from their perspective?
Can I just think? So I actually sent out a couple of emails just to thank, because I know sort of how much work has gone into this lunch program. And I want to personally thank Matt and Wade, publicly thank them. I think that nobody really understands. And also Mike, sorry for forgetting, it's both of three individuals who are working really hard to get this team on board to make sure that we are supporting our families in Norton. But I also want to do kind of a shout out to Matt. So Matt shared with me that when he came on board in Norton, Tim and Mike got connected very quickly to kind of, this was back in two thousand eighteen, to come up with sort of a crisis plan. So if we ever needed to kind of get this service going quickly, that it would be available and they would have sort of a system in place. So Matt, thank you. I think that it really speaks volumes, all of the outreach you've done to our town, to the senior center, to Beth Rossi, but certainly back in two thousand eighteen, just planning ahead for what potentially we are dealing with now, which is a crisis. And I think that's probably why it's gone off so smoothly. So I'm sure Matt wouldn't sort of pat his own back, but I would like to just sort of publicly thank all of them for really working diligently to get this off the ground. It certainly has made a difference to so many families. So thanks, everyone.
Thanks Carolyn. On behalf of the entire team, and yes, I agree with you and concur that, you know, the people at the front of the line here are our first responders, are our custodians and our professionals in front of safety of our students in our buildings. And now we'll be working a little bit more with the academic part, but I also want to publicly thank Champions who today donated all of their after-school snacks to food services for us to support and provide some more because they don't, they don't, just don't want that stuff sitting in closets. So that would be your pretzels and all of those types of snacks that they have for the kids. But thank you to Champions for donating those to us as well. And they've been reaching out every day about providing services. I'll let you know through that they're filing with the state to extend the number of students in their summer program because they're at full capacity for the summer already, just seventy-eight students every day. So it looks like that program. And I, I would guess it's a good move because I think this summer is going to be a long one for some families really wanting some either childcare or camps or all that stuff, if in fact, we're ready to go back to that type of a thing.
Joe, can I just add that we did also send out surveys asking families who may be in need to let us know that they're in need and what their needs are. And there was an additional survey that was sent out looking for people that wanted to help in any way. As of this morning, we had about sixteen responses to the families who are in need. And it was a range of different things from financial to food to childcare to clothing. And then we also had about thirty-nine responses to the wanting to help survey. And people were willing to help in terms of money, in terms of doing errands for people, dropping off a meal, things like that. So Vinnie Cersei and Matt and I met this morning and went over what we had so far and did some brainstorming about how to, how to manage it going forward and how to match people up and things like that. So we're not totally there yet, but we will be pretty quickly.
Thanks Janie. All right. There's no other comments on that then. Madam Chair, the next item, item number three is a request for a vote on hourly employees' wages. You guys ready?
Oh.
Good year.
What are we voting on for that?
Yeah, so we have custodians, administrative assistants, professionals, and many of us drivers that work for us that are all considered under federal law and state law, hourly employees. So the Commission of Education is highly recommending that we keep these people employed throughout this emergency, state emergency, for the purposes of providing them, that we're going to need them on day one upon return at each school. All, three of the, of those four groups, the custodians are actually coming in. By means of Thursday, the administrative assistants and the paraprofessionals will be doing professional development online as well as being able to be available to us as needed. This is not all of the union personnel. Our non-union personnel are all salaried employees as administrative assistants. So they're, they're under all different protocol.
I think my only question is, I heard just on TV, and I don't know if this applies to us or not, is that some people were saying it's better to give somebody a chance to get unemployment than it was to pay them if we're not paying them what we should pay them. So are we paying, by doing this vote, are we paying them what they should be getting?
Yes, this is a budgeted item for the entire year that does not include any overtime of any, of any course because there is no overtime to provide. So this, this is all budgeted money that you have and contractually you have an obligation.
Okay. So I guess I asked for a vote from the school committee to motion to approve the vote for hourly employee wages?
So moving that, that, and the person who moved it is who?
Me.
Yeah.
Who's me?
You know, yeah.
Oh my God, it's you! Wow!
And that's enough. Made the motion. It's been a second.
Janie, D, second.
Okay, you know what to do next. Kathleen, right?
All those in favor?
You have to do a, you have to begin a part, I'm sorry, Kathleen. We have to take a roll call. So you gotta call out each person's name and they say yes or no.
So, it's from my screen.
Hi.
Sherry? Yes, on the beach. Carolyn?
Maybe we lost her.
Janice?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, and I'm a yes, so that's four out of five.
Okay. Thank you.
So does that pass?
That's a four zero vote. One member right now is in lockdown, so it's a big handful.
Okay. So then our next, so then next thing is the vote to allow superintendent to negotiate and recommend final approval for the contract.
Yeah, you want me to read it?
Well, I can read it. Do I have to read the whole thing is my question?
Because it's, it's the actual agenda item, so you should just read it as such.
Vote to allow superintendent to negotiate and recommend to the school committee for a final approval of potential contract memorandums of understanding with unions, Norton Teachers' Association, Norton Paraprofessionals, and Administrative Assistance.
Okay, so to explain this clip for everyone, we now enter, we're now entering into clarifying this remote learning from home and what it looks like for these three different unions. Our custodial union right now is fine with working. They prefer to work. They're on the record to say they want to work. So, and they're also considered our most essential workers because of the safeties of the building. In terms of the other three rules, now we would, I would enter into a, an agreement through you, but I need to come back to you folks. So it'd be a meeting that we post for forty hour, forty-eight hours ahead and we'd have a virtual call and an actual discussion and vote on the agreement that I would be recommending to you.
Chair, one quick question on this.
Yeah.
I have obviously no, no issue at all with you negotiating this. What, what kind of turnaround do you think we can expect?
I'd say less than a week. I think by next Thursday you'll be voting on something is what I'm hoping for.
Okay, all right.
Definitely earlier.
Tonight's vote is just to allow you?
Say again?
Tonight, tonight's vote is just to allow you to continue negotiation?
This would be, this would authorize me to enter into negotiations for the purposes of this new way of doing business, remote learning and remote work from home.
Can I, Joe, can I make a question before we vote on anything else? So I would actually, just because, just because this is, it's such a kind of a, a hot issue right now, I would actually suggest maybe we, we set up a rolling meeting. In other words, forty-eight hours from now, a meeting, we're gonna say forty-eight hours a meeting posted.
So let's set it up, set it up for Thursday.
Okay, so then you can, then you can, as soon as you get, you can bring it to us, you know, that night, as we've already had, we've already posted a meeting forty-eight hours earlier.
Right, because we can always cancel the meeting.
Right.
Okay, so my guess would be, and I think we potentially can get this done tomorrow with Terry, since, in the morning, and I can speak with Terry offline, but we could put a, a Tuesday night at six-thirty, a Thursday night at six-thirty, and now we have those two dates right off the bat in the week. If we have to call another one for Friday on Wednesday, we can do it as long as we do a Friday noon, but it gives us that flexibility.
Yes, I'm gonna go. You.
Yeah, that's, that's, and also, just to say, Carolyn is back on now my phone. So thank you.
So do we have a vote to?
So, sorry, so, Dan Savaas, our motion to allow Joe to enter negotiations under a memorandum of understanding.
Sherry, go. All those in favor?
Is there a second?
I second it. Sherry Cohen.
I love the pointing, Jen.
If you pointed right to me, that would really...
So Vasa with the motion, Cohen with the second. Then it's a roll call, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Janie, D, yes.
Sherry Cohen.
Dan Savaas, yes.
Carolyn, I just unmuted you. Sharon, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you are. Um, sorry, guys. I guess I have no internet connection. I apologize. But Carolyn Gallagher, yes.
Madam Chair, the vote at the end of this five zero.
Yes. Okay, so moving on, vote to continue food service program to school-aged children pre-K to twelve.
This is just a support statement from the school committee for us to continue this. At some point, there's going to be some financial discussions that need to take place. I ask for those financials to be shared with us on a kind of a rolling basis starting next week so that I can at least inform you via email that, you know, this is what it costs us this week, so on and so forth. But this is a support, more of a support. I don't think we could stop this. I think it would be a very bad idea to stop it considering that we are providing on a regular basis about a hundred fifty, you know, families' meals every day. So that's a, that's a pretty good amount of deals that is going out for such a small district like us. And we hope that people, as this situation potentially gets worse, take it, take it back.
Joe, can I just ask a question about that? If we have the, the food available, is there a possibility to open that up to possibly senior citizens who are struggling right now?
Yeah, I'll defer to Matt on that. But I believe it is part of our crisis situation, Matt.
Yeah, so we have full capacity to open up. We're just waiting for word on whether we want to do that or not. We can, we can feed as many people as we need to. Our supply chain through Charwell is very strong. So even if we don't have a lot of food on site, we can ramp up really fast and be able to do this within twenty-four hours.
Is that something you're working with Beth? Like, are you in communication with Beth to see if, if her people have needs?
Yes, I'm communicating with Beth. I'm gonna call her. I called her on Monday. I'm gonna call her again tomorrow morning. We're gonna keep in touch pretty regularly, make sure that we're, we're, we're understanding the needs of the town. And we'll continue to bring it up at the two o'clock meetings with the town departments as well. Make sure everyone understands that it could become in need at some point.
Great, thank you.
Am I wrong, am I wrong in thinking that the cupboard of kindness has been closed?
It's closed until the sixth.
So this would be a real plus to the town?
Potentially, yes. Again, it's, we, we have to, as a management protocol, we have to defer to the town and their requests for need, and we're ready to go. It's just a process. Because they want to be able, they're gonna be taking the lead on communication and all of that stuff with the potential roll call, or they already have a creative list of people that they know. One of the things that I know about that they're working on right now is people who can't get out of their home. And right now, that's being taken care of, but I anticipate that that's going to become more of a situation on the town.
Joe, that's kind of the wall hole that we've created, that we have some volunteers who are delivering some food to elderly who can't get out of their house. You know, we're getting some real calls from people that they have no food for days.
Right.
So, and I'm sure that that's happening here as well. You know, so if there's possibility for volunteers that want to help, you know, deliver stuff and go through protocols of, you know, gloves and safety and all of that stuff, you know, not that I, not that I'm looking to put something else on your plate, but, you know, I'd be more than happy with Beth.
I'll, I'll bring it up at the Monday meeting with the town, that, you know, we're ready to go, just tell us, you know, when we want us to start, and we can get those meals ready to go. I know that between the food services employees, between volunteers, administrators, I have teachers and parents that have said that they would be willing to, you know, come to the school and, and deliver, you know, kind of like a stoopside delivery type of thing.
Right.
So it's just a matter of where's the need? Do we know we have the need, I believe, and I'm pretty certain that right now, it's being taken care of. But again, I think we just want to help if, if there's help that's needed. If not, we'll support it in other ways.
So is this vote tonight just to continue the school stuff that we have been doing? Or is this going to include the seniors as well? I mean, do we have?
I wouldn't need a vote to, I wouldn't need a vote to, to continue. I'm basically asking for a understanding from the school committee that we are doing this, that we think it's a, the right thing to do. Not only, in this particular case, we're right now feeding student aid, school-aged children, if we need to, to do the town. I, I don't know if I necessarily need a vote more than just an understanding that this is running a budget negative. Because typically, this account runs off of people paying for food. So everything that's going out the door is going out with zero coming in.
Okay, so again, do we need to make two votes or one vote that includes both, or this one?
You can extend this. Yeah, you can extend this to say food services program for the town of Norton as needed.
Okay, so let's take a vote to extend the food service program in Norton as needed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Sherry Cohen.
Sherry Cohen.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Janie, D, second.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Carolyn Gallagher? Sherry Cohen, yes.
Janie, D, yes.
Dan Savaas, yes.
Hey Joe, one quick question, maybe?
Hold on, hold on, I gotta state this for the record. Madam Chair, the true vote as well?
Yes, I do.
Kathleen's turned with a yes, so the vote is five zero. Thank you.
So, Joe, a quick question, maybe you or Matt, and I'm just assuming we've done this, you know, we've kind of consolidated all of the five buildings to, as far as the food program to the high school at this point?
Yes.
Or is there stuff kind of hanging around that's still, I just don't want to go back to anything like that spoiled or anything like that and have a whole debate?
No, we're, we're, yeah, we're rotating who they're needed.
Okay.
Hey, Carolyn and Matt, a quick question also. Are, are we in any position to get any kind of return via the free and reduced kids that are coming in?
Matt, go ahead.
So the feds have not awarded it to us. They, they opened it up for schools that have greater than fifty percent free or reduced students. They did not open it up to anyone less than fifty percent. So this is a sticking point.
They did open it up, like they're, they're not gonna reimburse us?
That's correct. They're only reimbursing schools that are greater than fifty percent. We're, we're having the arguments, we're arguing with DESI, we're, we're sending emails. It's not a great battle.
It doesn't matter if it's, if it's less than fifty percent. If someone's free and reduced, they're free and reduced.
Correct, that's, yeah.
Let me show you without that. I was wanting to have an argument.
Well, give me till tomorrow. We have a, a conference call with the, with Jay Sullivan at DESI tomorrow, and the food nutrition program is going to be involved in it. So a lot of the business managers have the same argument. Let's see what happens tomorrow. If we don't have a lot of success, I'd be happy to bring you on board to help out with that.
Right. Well, the next, the next call will be the Sun Chronicle, and we'll explain to them what they're doing to us.
Yeah. Another piece is that if even FEMA funds do become available, food for the town that's used for emergency services on a time and material basis is reimbursable. So we do have, there's a secondary outlet that we could go with.
Hey Dan, the other thing too, Joe here, the other thing too to think about is, you know, it's, it's a reelection year. I hate to say it that way, but it may be time to put some pressure on both of our US senators and the Congressmen. I, I, I am sure that a unified letter from the region school committees on this issue, or the selectmen and town councils and all of that, going to those people could at least get some, something in play that, you know, this isn't, you know, a poor child in one community is a poor child in one community.
It doesn't matter, right? It doesn't matter how.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. Your town doesn't matter. Now, your town is irrelevant. What's relevant is that the child and their family is in a situation of free and reduced. So therefore, it doesn't matter what community you're in.
And I, I don't think we should go to Sun Chronicle. I think we should go to Boston Globe.
Well, I, I agree with you on that, on a number of reasons, but I use that as an example, but, but you're right.
Okay, so.
Anyway, so.
True. Moving on.
Madam Chair, I do have other businesses.
Okay.
I just, there have been a couple of things that I reported. As we know, there's a lot of play out there about digital learning and our one-to-one, three-to-twelve. Be mindful just for the public record that our A to two is not online in terms of one-to-one. And that the idea of one-to-one as a support in the classroom and supplemental support and enhancement and enrichment and even credit recovery is very different from online teaching and learning. And there's a lot of different perspectives and views on that. As a matter of fact, it's interesting that the, the recommendation is what's called remote learning, which is not only digital in terms of a computer, but also everything from project-based to virtual calls, to virtual classrooms, to all of that other stuff that's beyond just, and Dan, as mentioned, you know, how to use cable access. You know, can we use cable access in terms of recording messages and/or even doing live call-ins, which I know some local, local cable access has been able to do. We'll reach out to them, Dan, on that issue. To see if there, if non-cable is, non-media would be available to us as well. These are unshut-in waters. I'm hoping to continue the virtual calls, I don't know, with students in our staff, which has gone over with our staff yesterday when we were very young. And at the same time, we haven't hit, you know, the concerns that I have, which is we're up to three positive tests in Norton as of, I believe, yesterday, if I remember correctly. And so, you know, these numbers are growing, and we just hope that we have no loss of life and our families don't have to deal with that, our staff or ourselves.
Um, I know you said that you were gonna bring this up at a later time, but just so the other school committee members know, this is something I brought up today. One thing we have to consider for graduation requirements is the fifty hours of community service, and how do we want to deal with that with other students? I'm just looking for thoughts on other community service.
Yeah, so, yeah, and it's, Kathy, as you know, I think it's a great question. One of the things I'm waiting for is the competency determination of having to test the M P S for any student who's a twelve grader who hasn't yet. Because the, the three things really that come out of the state as a requirement are, you have to take the co-education as a requirement, you don't have to pass it. You have to take US history, but you don't have to pass it. You have to take four years of English, and you do have to pass it. And you have to, you have to pass all three tests. Everything else is under your jurisdiction. Now, we utilize recommendations from the Mass Corps and DESI and college and university and all of that, but any and all of those, including the one you just brought up with community service, is a discussion that we need to have, I think, as a whole picture of what's going to be happening going forward, including the community service. I also have some ideas about how students can do community service. The governor at every, at every conference has noted, and I continue to note that, you know, call a loved one, make sure you check on your elderly, on your grandparents, you know, so we could have, we could expand our definition of community service to include supporting family, which is something we try to stay away from. But in this particular case, as a light thriving situation, the socialization, as I believe, who was moving earlier, I think is really, really important, especially for our senior citizens of the town.
So maybe that, so maybe that we have to come in and that we have to step up.
Right, right. And we, you know, exactly.
Well, maybe we could connect them with a senior in town, almost like, like the old-fashioned pen pal system.
Yep.
You know, just to call in or something. I mean, obviously, keep your distance and so forth, but just, I'm sure there's seniors out there that are longing for a conversation with somebody.
Yeah, and I would, as well on Monday, that, you know, where we could potentially expand, that we could have students who formalize and do an email and all of that, and then contact, you know, a senior, and they have, they're able to, you know, have conversations. It does open up a lot of other discussions, but this is, we're such a, you know, dynamic situation right now.
True. Okay, does anybody have any other issues or thoughts or comments?
Are we under, under other business right now?
Yes, we are, Matt.
Yes, I'd like to bring up something. So...
Yes, I'd like to bring up something, um so this has to do with Sherry and Kathleen and being the uh designated signatories for warrants, um during the COVID-nineteen crisis, there is a possibility that if either those two were to be quarantined, we would not have anyone who was capable of, uh allowed to sign warrants for us. So moving forward to keep the process, that we would be able to have somebody, we'd like to move forward to vote where you would vote to set all of these school committee members as alternates, um if the primary and the secondary are not available.
So Matt, earlier tonight, um I don't know if you saw the email from the town, I don't know if you were on it, but they've, their move, their legal counsel is suggesting that that's not the intent of the law. Or, I don't know, I know you reached out, um I don't know if you reached out, I'm sorry, I'm putting this on you at the last minute, but maybe we can just table this to see if there's other perspectives, that their legal counsel is suggesting that that's, that is not the intent of the law, is not to make everybody an alternate.
Right, so the legal counsel did get back to us, they've been sending us emails for about half hour or so, um they said that we could do it as long as we worried it very clearly that there was a a primary, a secondary, and then the reason why we would go to the alternates.
Okay, all right, I didn't see that one.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple more came through.
So should we just name one alternate, or do we name all three as the alternate?
Yeah, so um you would name, so you would designate Sherry as the, as the signatory, uh Kathleen would be designated as the first alternate, and then any other available member of the school committee is designated as an alternate in the event the name designee and alternate are unavailable.
Okay, so do we have a vote?
That would be the motion, yeah.
Yeah, I think I might, so Kathleen, hold on for one second, I think I might have screwed up with the last warrant though, because I couldn't get there, you guys were trying to close early.
Yes.
I couldn't get there, I thought Dan was my alternate, so-
I thought so, we could not find it in a minute stating that, I do remember something about that, we just could not identify.
But Dan had done it before.
Okay, 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 Dan signed the last one.
Yeah, Dan signed the warrant, um so um Donna has signed up the warrant, warrant, um we were waiting for Sherry to sign, it's an extra possible, we can't hold sign on her, um however, the town isn't holding up payments because of it.
Okay. Okay, so considering it's, it's Sherry and Sherry is the designee, I'm the alternate, so we're looking for a motion to accept the rest of the school committee members as an alternate should need be, is that how it goes?
To the designee and the alternate not be available. Yep, there you go.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion for that. Sherry Cohen, showing. Second, second?
GND, second.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Kathleen, showing, yes.
GND, yes.
Sherry Cohen, yes, Carolyn, you're unmuted.
Dan Savas, yes.
Should I, should I?
Carolyn, can you go again, you were muted. Can't hear you.
Jen, can you unmute me?
Oh, they're here.
There we go.
Thanks, um Carolyn Gallagher, yes. Okay, so is there, so that's all said, is there any other business?
I have no other business matters here.
Anybody else? So now, are are there public people on this meeting?
Yeah, they could be unmuted too, I don't know if there's anyone who wants to say that.
You are unmuted.
I don't know how to do that, I don't have that power.
Nope, you don't, Jen has it right now, she'll unmute anybody.
All of our guests have been unmuted and are welcome to, um have questions? You don't have any questions, you can just say all that too as well. Okay, I'm gonna take that as everybody is all set? Is there any further?
Madam Chair, you need a motion to adjourn and roll call.
Right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Carolyn Gallagher, some votes? Second?
Sherry Cohen, showing, second.
All those in favor?
GND, yes.
Sherry Cohen, yes.
Dan Savas, yes.
Carolyn Gallagher, yes. So the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all, have a great weekend.
Bye. Stay, stay healthy.
Thank you, bye, everybody. All right, goodnight, guys.
Bye.
Goodnight.
Good job, my God. Goodbye.